Boo. Got this captain ordering, look at them, man, all these people out there, man.
Even the me is watching home.
Okay.
You do?
Y'all, it's six o'clock. We're gonna call this meeting to order. If y'all would stand for the pledge of allegiance, it's gonna be led by our boy scout, Todd Steele, not Todd Steele, Lee Steele. Todd, you can do it next time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna present you with another one of the senior deputies. Thank you for leading the pledge for us. Alderman Miller, would you give the implication?
Thank you. Having thought we come before you, we first say thank you for this day, this night. We just thank you for being who you are. We actually, having thought now, we go forward in the business of this city that you allow us to make the right decision to be pleading in our sight. We thank you, Lord, for this city, this county, and this state, and this United States that we live in. Continue, Lord, to bless our soldiers wherever they might be. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes. Now a motion to approve the docket of claims listed in front of you.
Motion, second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item six is to approve the minutes from the special mayor and board of aldermen meeting on February 20th.
So move.
Second.
We'll have a roll call vote. I know some weren't present.
Alderman Harris.
Thank you, thank you.
Alderwoman Lynch.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Wicker.
And the motion passes. Now a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item eight is the donations docket. Is there a motion on that?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. The motion passes. Item nine is the personnel docket. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. We have another special recognition tonight for a public works employee. Lee, would you come up and present that?
Good afternoon, Lord Mayor. So as I mentioned on the first one we did, it's voted on by the employees, so you can get it twice. So congratulations to Mr. Willie Smith again for getting it the second time in a row. So like I said before, Mr. Willie is a great asset to the city. Just today, he went to the junkyard in the rain, pulled out seats out of another truck, tailgate, taillight, save us money and get a vehicle back going. So we appreciate everything he does.
We do appreciate you, Willie.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You wanna do another picture with Willie?
Yeah.
You gonna win it next month, too? Thank you, Will. Appreciate you. Item eleven, we have one of our planning commissioners who is stepping down, and we're gonna recommend Arnie Arnt as the replacement planning commissioner. Is there a motion on that?
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item twelve did not make the docket. It's the approval to pay invoices from Kirk Auto World and Paul Burnett Nissan for purchase of parts vehicles that did not make the deadline. These are budgeted items, and I think they are coming in under the amount of the budget that we had.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item thirteen is the approval to surplus old kennels and shelving that really have no value in the animal shelter department.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item fourteen is CE nineteen thirty-five, five-eleven Hill Street. Would you come up and present that, Austin?
Yes, sir. Do you mention this is CE nineteen thirty-five? It's a public health and safety hearing for five-eleven Hill Street. Lawrence Johnson is the owner. Just a brief history of how we got here tonight. We started with a certified letter, and we posted the property back in July for an August twentieth hearing. At that meeting, it was tabled for sixty days until October fifteenth, at which time it was tabled for another one hundred and twenty days, which brings it up again tonight for consideration on a demolition. There are pictures in the prop of the property in your staff report, and the condition has remained the same. We have made contact with Mr. Johnson throughout the process, and he's here tonight, I believe, and we've communicated the disconnect of utilities and helped him kind of navigate that process. But it is on the agenda again tonight for consideration for that demolition. And even if it does go tonight, we would give him the opportunity to proceed on his own merit just before we got the chance to get to it with our with our own crews. So it's on the agenda tonight for the consideration of a demolition for health and safety hearing as originally noticed for August twentieth.
Any questions for Austin? Mr. Johnson, did you want to speak?
Good evening, Board, Mr. Mayor. So as he stated, I sent a project list to the planning committee on all the tasks that have been been going on since the last time I was here and met with you guys. So the big thing is I finally got a quote that was signed and sent off to the person that will do the demolition. Do I need to send that to the planning committee, or do I need to give you guys a copy of this tonight, or what?
You could just give it to Austin on our behalf.
Okay.
And have you engaged that person to do the work?
Yeah, he is supposed, let me read this before I pass it on you. So we finally came up with a price, and I had to, I didn't have that kind of cash, so I had to go to several financial institutions, and finally someone gave me a loan today to get the work done. And so a company by the name of Pico Construction will do the work, and they will begin on three eighteen, and weather permitting, we should have it done by three twenty-one. So and this got some stuff in there about how much money I have to have. That's been the big thing. I just have a problem paying for something whether it's half, twenty-five percent before I see anything happen.
That's wise.
Yeah.
So anyway, we, I think we finally said enough words to one another on that. But that's the plan. And I did get a letter back or an email back from, I think it's called Mississippi eight one one dig, and supposedly the flags are out today. I didn't go over there today because it was raining so hard. But I sent that ticket to the construction guy and said, hey, they said you need to call them before you get started because this needs to be in your name versus my name. And but then everybody else said that they had their stuff done, Entergy, Atmos, the city, and all the other little places that
I've got, I'm gonna ask my public works director a question. Once y'all, once eight-one-one is marked, how many days are those markings good for?
Two weeks.
So we may have to call it in again if you're not doing the demo. When'd you, what day did you say you're doing the demo?
Eighteen.
Oh, yeah, it should be good then. Okay, that should be good. Very good.
Unfortunately, they do that. If it does expire, they'll have to call in for a complete remark.
Right.
It doesn't just, we can't just renew it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. But you're gonna, you're on top of it then.
I hope so.
Okay.
It's been a bigger job than I saw.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for being here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I make a motion then, based upon the information just received. Based on information received, we make a motion that we do not proceed with the demolition until after April the fifteenth.
Second.
Okay. And that gives him plenty of time to get it done. That works out great.
More than what we're fax.
Yeah, I think that's great. So there's a motion and a second. Is all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Stay in touch with the planning department or me if you need anything.
Does he work with Ms. Dootman?
Yes, he's the boss.
Oh, he's the man. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Next is item fifteen, is the approval to authorize the city attorney to pursue a temporary construction easement for the northwest corner of McInville and Pleasant Hill. Austin and I met with Lee Germany, not Lee Germany, Bob Jarman the other night or the other day, and we were trying to figure out where the limits of construction would be for that intersection at Pleasant Hill and McInville. And they're gonna need to take some of the hill down on the northwest corner. That is fully within our city limits. So they asked us if we would go about the business of getting the temporary construction easement. Joe Frank is in contact with the county engineer. They don't have the exact limits of that construction set yet, or the points. When they get them, Joe Frank is gonna let Stephen know, and before that, just as a courtesy, Alderman Miller and I are gonna go up and talk.
And maybe Alderman Piper.
And maybe Alderman Piper, yes. Yeah, that's your district, isn't it?
Yep.
So we'll all go talk to her and make sure she knows what we're up to, so she has a good feeling about it. We certainly don't want to have anybody think they're being taken advantage of, so. If y'all would authorize Stephen to handle that legal work, could someone make a motion?
Motion.
Sergeant.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item sixteen also came out of that same meeting with Bob Jarman, the approval for an amendment to the existing MOU at DeSoto County for intersection improvements to McInville and Pleasant Hill to add the installation of the needed lanes and the temporary traffic signal. We kind of talked about that way back, about splitting that cost with them. They're working on that. So we just need to have Stephen work with the county attorney to amend that MOU.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item seventeen, that's what we've all been waiting for, the end of the year update from the Department of Community and Economic Development Director, Gia Mathini.
Okay, and I need the screen. Not sure how that works. Need to just press. That was gonna, that'll go away. Okay, community and economic development.
Try to speak into the microphone.
That better?
That's better. Yes, thank you, Gia.
All right, so under community and economic development, we do lots of other things than your basic city services. We work with grants, tourism, mobile app and website, community engagement, outreach, partnerships, and funding. Through our grants, we have worked in 2024 on a total of eight grants totaling $2.5 million in funding for the city. Some of those are still in process today. They cover tourism, recreation, the environment, economic development, arts and culture, and downtown revitalization. Right now, we are also looking at some of our top grants for 2024 that are still in process, and that is the Mississippi Outdoor Stewardship Fund, which was $1.7 million. The USCPA Brownfields should be completed by the end of the year, and that's a total of $409,000, which has benefited approximately seven property owners. We also received a few smaller grants throughout the year, and we've worked on a few new large grants that have passed the first round of approval in '24 but are still in cycle, and we hope to have positive feedback and an answer with a final approval this year. And those would be the Mississippi Wildlife Fisheries Parks Land and Water Conservation Fund, which would fund some lighting over at Kirkendall Park, and Mississippi Main Street Revitalization Program, which would provide uplighting at the historic water tower, improvements for a pocket park, and Placer AI data, which would help us with some data collection that we use to promote our events and also benefit our local businesses. Grants are not the only thing that we do, that we work on in community development that allows us to get funding to host our events and provide other resources for the community. So we do work very hard on outreach and partnerships. And one of those that came about last year was a relationship that we built with Sportsman Solutions, and it has been a very good partnership that has now assisted Jared in the Parks Department. So we're seeing a lot of funding come through that for our Parks Department. Obsidian PR is a public relations firm that reached out to us last year, and we started a conversation. We don't do tons with them, but we are gonna start using them more often. They've been a wonderful asset and a partner to work with for our community events, and they're helping us with our social media and getting more engagement with the public through social media, website, and mobile app. And then, of course, we have many, many, many supportive businesses here in the community who provide financial assistance, in-kind and volunteer support for all of our events. So tourism is under community development, and we start our events in April, and they end at the end of the year in November. And as you can see, this is a list of the events that we host throughout the year. We're gonna start with Excel by Five, which is our kindergarten readiness program. And this is also what we would consider a workforce development program, because even though we are working with our youngest citizens, you know, when they're born at birth until they turn age five, we are really trying to give them a leg up when they start their first day of kindergarten and get them prepared, because they're our next generation of citizens, and we want to give them the best success in school. So we start the year, it's really fun, but it's probably our smallest event, and it is the first event in the city, and that is our Touch a Truck event, which we partner with the National Guard Armory. Last year, we had four hundred visitors, fifteen businesses participated. We received food through a sponsor, and then we thank our police department, because they came out and volunteered and grilled the hamburgers and hot dogs. Another thing to note about city events, I know we have lots of events in the city, but city-led events are there for the public. They are open to everyone, and they are free. Everything except for the 10K race, which we will get to, is free to the public. So this is a benefit to our community, and all of that foot traffic also benefits our downtown businesses. The second thing that we support with Excel by Five is our POP program. That is Power of Produce. It's a healthy eating program. We have partnered with a local pediatric office for the last seven years, who has been our sponsor for that. And we do that once a month on Children's Day at the farmer's market. We host our annual children's fair, health fair, at the farmer's market. We have hosted it in other locations, but have had the most success at the farmer's market, and we partner with local and state agencies. We had over twenty, twenty resources there for families last year, and we are planning to do that again in September. The Dolly Parton Imagination Library, so the city of Hernando was the very first city in the county to offer the program. We may still be the only city that is offering the program, but this is a free book program for children ages birth to five. They graduate at five, and they receive one book a month in the mail. Currently, we have about six hundred and fifty active children and eight hundred and twenty-four who have graduated the program. This is an early literacy initiative, and we try to get children ready to read for kindergarten. But to be able to put this event together, I'm sorry, this program together, it costs approximately $19,000. And those funds come directly from grants, donors, and sponsors that we work with our local businesses and put on events to be able to raise these funds. We also give away an additional fifteen hundred books throughout the year at our children's events that we have, like our Cookies with Santa, the farmer's market, and Touch a Truck, and Dickens of a Christmas. The Hernando Farmer's Market is the next big event at the city, and that's twenty-seven Saturdays of the year. It starts the end of April in conjunction with the DeSoto County Board of Supervisors Earth Day event. It's eight AM until one PM on the town square, and we appreciate the Board of Supervisors very much for allowing us the space at the courthouse to be able to host this farmer's market. I'm gonna skip over that second bullet and go to the Double Up Bucks Grant Program, because we do accept SNAP benefits at our market. So we are different than a lot of the markets in Mississippi. We are called a centralized farmer's market, and what that means is we manage credit card processing, EBT and SNAP benefits, and some other things at a manager table, which other markets may not have the staff and the ability to do. With that, we are able to apply for grants, and we do have another grant that we've been able to benefit from for the last seven years. It's called the Double Up Bucks Program. So if someone uses SNAP benefits at our market, say they spend $10, we're gonna give them another $10 in Double Up Bucks to buy fruits and vegetables, and that goes back to our farmers and gives them more healthy foods so that they can live a healthier lifestyle. We offer Senior and Children's Days once a month, twenty-seven, I'm sorry, twenty-five Saturdays of the year we had entertainment, and that brings in more foot traffic. So we have about a hundred thousand shoppers that come to the town square over the course of twenty-seven Saturdays. And every year, I bring the statistics of the sales, which we collect as a farmer's market from our vendors. And every year, I think, oh, we are just going to be at our point where we're going to plateau, because our numbers are so high, and we're very proud of that. But they have not plateaued yet. They are still increasing, and this past year, we had over $800,000 in sales at our market. That's just twenty-seven days, not twenty-seven full weeks. So that is a phenomenal number to show. One thing I want that you all and, of course, the community to know is that we don't receive that $800,000. That goes directly into the hands of our farmers and vendors. But how this benefits the city is that those dollars are being dispersed in the community and are benefiting all of our businesses indirectly. We have so many visitors, and even our local residents who come to the downtown, people come here and they will make a stop in our boutiques, they will go and have lunch, they will stop and get gas, and they may even stop at Kroger again to get more things that they could not find at the farmer's market. So this event is truly a benefit to everyone that comes here. And our small follow, farmers, because I follow agriculture and work with them, it is a very tough business to be a farmer. I know I wouldn't want to be a farmer, but I love our farmers, and I love their food, and we have the best food at our farmer's market here in Hernando. And without these sales, they would not be able to continue doing what they do. So we are very thankful for the shoppers that come to Hernando to do this. This was a huge plus for us last year. It was something we were not expecting. A shopper came and told us about it. But the Southern Living magazine ranked the Hernando Farmer's Market as one of the top twelve farmer's markets in the South that you should visit. So not only are we recognized in the state and regionally, but now we are recognized nationally as one of the best farmers markets in the United States. And this is not something that we go out and do just to popular vote. This is something that they go out and collect data from, so we're really proud of that. Okay, my passion here is the Water Tower 10K race, because this is what's giving us the funds to raise for our books. Last year was the most fun event. We have the best after-party, which is a huge draw for our runners, and this is how we get more people to our city. It was our biggest turnout with five hundred and seventy-eight runners from eleven states and fifty-nine cities. But what I want you to notice here is that this event is supported right here at home. Of all of those runners, two hundred and twenty-seven were from Hernando. That's how well this this community supports this event. If we look at DeSoto County as a whole, three hundred and seventy-five DeSoto Countians came to the race, and four hundred and seventy-nine altogether from Mississippi supported the Water Tower 10K race. We had twenty-four sponsors, which is what helps us cover all of our costs for our sponsors and our after-party, and $15,000 was raised for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. Dickens of a Christmas ends our season of events, and it is a wonderful, wonderful event. I'm showing up here Placer AI data. This is also the same company that we have written in another grant. They are nationally recognized for the data that they can collect, and in '23, we had over thirteen thousand attendees come to our downtown. Forty-nine percent of them were between the ages of thirty-five and sixty-five, and twenty-three percent had annual household incomes over $100,000. That is the type of visitor we want to see here in Hernando. Those are the ones that are gonna come and benefit our local businesses, and they are gonna have a fun time when they're here, because when they come, they're gonna see that Hernando is the place to be. In 2024, we did some, we were able to secure some really new fun activities, but we can't control the weather, and it rained, so we didn't get to do everything we wanted to, and we are already securing those same activities for this year. But just to show you some of the things that we are preparing for, last year, we had two trolleys instead of one. That was a huge benefit, and it was packed because it was a rainy day. So our event does not just get held on the town square. It is all throughout Main Street, which is what we're trying to to show off, is our main street. And senior citizens would like to go to our museum. They would like to go to different restaurants, but they can't walk to every place on our main street. It's too difficult for them. And then, of course, we have visitors who come who don't want to fight for parking, you know, that can be an issue sometimes. So Kroger, this year, we partnered with Kroger to use their parking lot as a trolley stop, and people parked their car right next to the trolley stop, got on, and they got front row parking to our downtown for the event. Because of the rain, the trolleys were awesome, because everybody stayed dry, got to go to the downtown and shop. They got a ride back on the trolley at one of our many trolley stops that we had on the square, and they were able to take it. the square, and they were able to take it directly to the museum where they could pick up a second trolley and do the trolley tour of homes. But the museum had the biggest turnout that they had all year because the trolley was able to get people back and forth around the square. We also partnered with the Overton Park Mobile Shell, which will be really great this year since we could not have them come last year because it's all electric and the rain was not a good thing. Opera Memphis is another new partner. They were able to come, and they were beautiful. They came to the high tea, and they also sang in each of the boutiques in the town square. So we're already going to partner with them again this year, too. And another new partnership is the DeSoto Shriners. They are a wonderful organization right here in Nesbit, and they had their very first Festival of Trees with the Dickens event. What we did was partner with a downtown shop that did not have a tenant. We didn't want to see that shop vacant for the holiday event. They let us use their store, and we were able to decorate it with trees. The Shriners had their biggest fundraiser ever. Santa got to set up with the children, and it was just a wonderful... That's a wonderful example of a great partnership that helped both nonprofit and the community. Dickens of a Christmas, social media and marketing. Okay, so this is something else I thought was very interesting, and I just wanted to share. So our Dickens of a Christmas is our newest event. It does get a lot of traction at the event, but we don't always have a lot of traction on social media because it takes a while for you to build up those followers. Last year, with our Dickens of event... Dickens of a Christmas event, we had 317,000 views, 3,700 interactions, which means people were actually doing things on the site, and 22,000 visits to the page. We shared that information to our farmer's market page because the farmer's market partners, and because of Dickens, they had an additional 20,000 views and 1,000 to 7,000 views per post. Community development also oversees our website. We worked on a new launch a couple of years ago, and each of our departments are wonderful to work with. They oversee their own pages, but if there is any technical support that is required, they do call community development for that. We update the calendar with most of our events and news releases. We oversee the annual events page and community development pages. And we also have a QR code, but this is not any QR code. This is our flow code, and a flow code is a little bit different. So we put this on all of our marketing material that's in print, and so people can use that to download the mobile app. But what's different about this is that the mobile app also has a landing page. So when you click on this link, you can download the mobile app, but you can also go directly to any of our city pages. And that's how we get more traction and visibility on our website, and people can see what we actually have available to them, so it provides additional resources. Right now, we have over 2,500 mobile app users, and in the bottom-left corner, just in the last two weeks, I just wanted to show you how we can tell on our analytics what people are looking at. Right now, they're interested in the DeSoto County Earth Day Celebration and the Chamber of Commerce Fashion Show, and those will change regularly as we start getting new events. As it gets warmer, this is really going to pick up with our activity, and people are going to be wanting to know what's going on so that they can go to things. So we rely on the community, too, to give us information about those events. And then, as far as our mobile app goes, these are our analytics. We had 107,000 views last year on our mobile app. When somebody does use the mobile app, they have 9.36 screens per session, so that's telling you how many different screens they're looking at when they're on the mobile app, and it takes an average of 3.5 minutes per session for those individuals. It doesn't take you that long to use it. That's just how long they are on it because they're interested in seeing what we have to offer, and that's great. So this year, we actually have some opportunities for sponsorship, for banner ads, and we also post all of our sponsors on the partner page so people will be able to link up to those sponsors. And I cannot thank you all enough for hiring the new community development assistant, Tiffany Austin. She has been wonderful to work with. She has been helping me put some of these new things together. There's just a lot that we need to do, and we are really trying to make it very robust so that we can have a lot of offerings for communities and sponsors. So this is a new partnership opportunity guide we've created, and she was very instrumental in helping us put that together. We're also doing a beta test on an Eventony site, which will help us to promote and manage volunteers at sponsors and events. And then, coming up, we've already written three more grants that we hope that will get awarded in 2025, and we will look for opportunities that create and enhance a safe, livable, and vibrant community for residents, businesses, and visitors. Any questions?
That worked, Gia.
Yes.
Good job.
Thank you.
We appreciate all you do and all the grants you get for us and all the publicity you get for us and helping keep us transparent by getting the word out on events. All right. Item 17, DeSoto County is building a new emergency operations center on our side of Star Landing in our city limits, and they were requesting to waive the fees and inspections for that building. Have a motion on that?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item 19 is the approval of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Renewal Letter that's in your packet.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item 20 is the utility adjustments.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Item 21. All in favor, say aye. We are now adjourned.